This meeting of the Williamsburg James City County School Board to order. Before we begin by certifying closed session, can I get a motion to allow Mr. Kelly to attend this meeting via electronic communication?
Mr. Chair, I move to allow Mr. Kelly to attend this meeting via electronic communication.
Thank you, Ms. Ombi. A second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Young, was that? Ms. Young? Okay. Good. I wasn't sure who I heard. Okay. Ms. Aller?
Ms. Ombi?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
You can't vote. They're voting for me.
Oh, that's of course. Sorry about that. And Mr. Dowell?
Aye.
All right. We've got Mr. Kelly with us.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Welcome, Mr. Kelly. And can I get a motion to certify closed session?
I certify that to the best of each member's knowledge, the Williamsburg James City County School Board, while in closed session, discussed only public business matters, lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements as stated in Virginia law on that only such public matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered.
Thank you, Ms. Hummel. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. And Ms. Aller?
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Ms. Ombi?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Mr. Dowell?
Aye. Ms. Aller, would you take the role?
Yes. Dr. Beers?
Here.
Ms. Cook?
Here.
Ms. Hummel?
Here.
Mr. Kelly?
Here in a virtual way.
Ms. Ombi?
Here.
Mrs. Young?
Here.
Mr. Dowell?
Here. That takes us to item 3.03, Approval of the Agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Mr. Chair, I move that we present, that we approve the agenda as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Ombi. A second, please?
Second.
I think that was Mr. Kelly?
Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Ms. Aller?
Ms. Ombi?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Mrs. Hummel?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Dowell?
Aye. All right. Thank you. So that takes us to item 4.01, Superintendent's Report and Other Board Announcements. Dr. Heron, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My report this evening begins with much deserved recognition for our Fine Arts Program. For the third consecutive year, WJCC Schools has been named a Best Community for Music Education by the National Association of Music Merchants Foundation. Schools and divisions receive this award for their exceptional commitment to music and arts as innovative learning opportunities for students. Honorees are selected based on highly qualified teachers, funding of programs, and access to music instruction. By the time they graduate, every student has participated in some form of music education, including music courses, orchestra band, or chorus. Congratulations to our incredible music teachers and fine arts program leaders. And I want to say a special thank you for your work this year during the pandemic in keeping music moving along in our schools. April is a month of celebrations. First, it is National Volunteer Month. In fact, President Biden has named this National Volunteer Week. I want to thank the dozens of volunteers and community partners who stepped forward during the pandemic to support our students, teachers, and staff. That you found time to share your talents during this very challenging year is reflective of the strong support for public education in our community. This Friday, I will be visiting several local businesses and organizations that have been named to the Virginia School Board Association's Business Honor Roll for their dedication and service to our schools. Honorees include Busch Gardens for assisting with and providing a location for last year's graduation ceremonies, the Colonial Williamsburg Foundation for hosting the senior class drive down Duke of Gloucester Street, and we will be doing this again this year, and the Williamsburg Area Restaurant Association for providing families meals during the pandemic and expressing their appreciation for teachers and staff through discounts to local restaurants. WJCC Schools enjoys the partnership of many businesses and organizations in our community. These honorees represent a small portion. We are incredibly grateful and fortunate to live and work in such a caring community. April is also the month of the military child. I want to invite our board members in the community to purple up and wear purple tomorrow to recognize 1,200 military-connected students in our schools. Children from military families often face frequent moves, new schools, family deployments, and separations throughout their childhood. Each year, schools across the nation join together to recognize the sacrifices made by military families and students with a family member serving in the armed forces. Tomorrow is Purple Up Day, so be sure to wear something purple. And finally, I'd like to congratulate our student athletes and the students who competed in VHSL sports, forensics, and fine arts competitions. We have several individuals and teams who placed in the top three in state competitions. Others won regional titles and now are competing for state championship honors. We wish them the best of luck, and we are very proud of all that you've achieved. Mr. Chairman, that concludes my remarks for this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Heron. I think we have two committee reports from Board Member Ombi.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Last week, I attended a Student Advisory Committee meeting where staff solicited feedback from students on the hybrid and how they were experiencing that. Of the students who attended the meeting, about half of those students were back in the hybrid model. The other half remained remote. Of the students who were back on campus two days a week, all of them wanted to go back to campus four or five days a week. So I know that they're very happy today when they got that phone call. When staff asked students how, what their classrooms look like in terms of the number of students in the classrooms, most had about 15 students in them. And the students praised their teachers for ensuring that everyone was socially distanced, and teachers were sanitizing, and reminding people to stay apart and to wear their masks. And all the students felt like everyone was doing the right thing with regard to following all the mitigation strategies. I asked the students what their thoughts were on year-long block schedule versus the semester block schedule, and that, too, was split about 50-50, with certainly the freshmen who'd never experienced the semester block not knowing what that was like. So they were very content with the year-long classes. Some of the upperclassmen did mention that they felt like they weren't able to take all of the classes that they wanted to take, particularly Calculus A, B, and B.C. seemed to be a difficult difficulty for some students when we switched from the semester to the year-long. Staff asked students if they had some ideas for how to celebrate their teachers and thank them, and they had some very creative ideas, like dress up like your favorite teacher, like dress up like your math teacher on Monday. They suggested coordinating with key clubs and having key clubs get service hours for recognizing and appreciating teachers, or writing notes, or having note cards available in the lunchroom so students could write a note and thank their teachers for all they've done this year. And then I asked students, was there anything in particular they thought that they would need in terms of support from the division moving forward next year with four days a week, or five days a week? Five days a week. And they did talk about the difficulty just transitioning to the hybrid, how much tireder they were, and so just getting used to that schedule. They suggested maybe a two-week transition, you know, just allowing students to get back into the groove of attending classes five days a week. And multiple students talked about the need to ensure that there's an advisory period or AEP so that students have that extra time to get caught up on studies moving throughout the year. And then I attended a Special Education Advisory Committee meeting as well, where the committee was provided an update by staff and myself on budget, graduation activities, what school will look like next year with five days a week, the virtual option. One of the things that Ms. Bourgeois presented to the committee, just an update, was the number of teachers and employees who are teachers who are now Wilson-trained. And so that's a specialized accreditation for reading instruction that a lot of students with dyslexia often tap into. And I know back in the day, not that long ago, when my 15-year-old was in second grade, we only had two Wilson-trained teachers in the entire division. And so now there's 18. So accolades to our division for making that accessible. And those teachers are spread across all of our buildings and at every level. And then CAC discussed their annual plan to us and progress from the last two years that they've made towards that plan. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Ombi. Any other committee reports from the board? Hearing none. We're going to move on to item 5.01, Citizens' Comments. I think that we had at least one. Thank you.
Hello, Bob Garth. I would like to ask why the elementary kids can't be in school on Fridays. I know a few board meetings ago, Dr. Heron said that there may be small groups on Fridays for kids who may need remediation. But when I asked our school principal about that, she didn't seem to know anything about it, and I haven't heard a thing about that. So I don't see why the kids can't be in five days a week. Thank you.
I think that does conclude our citizen comment for the evening. I do want to say that I do appreciate, and we always do appreciate, comment from our citizens and the time that they take to provide us with their concerns that they would have us hear. If we can move on to the Consent Agenda, excuse me, and what that looks like is 6.01, Approval of Minutes from March 12, 2021 Meeting, 6.02, point 02, Approval of Minutes from March 16, 2021 Meeting, 6.03, Approval of Minutes from April 13, 2021 Meeting, 6.04, Personnel Actions, 6.05, Resolution R-13-21, National Teacher Appreciation Week, 6.06, Resolution R-14-1, School Nutrition Employee Appreciation Week, 6.07, Resolution R-15-21, National School Nurse Day, Item 6.08, Resolution R-16-21, School Library Month, Item 6.09, Revised Policy GBL, Personnel Records, Item 6.10, Revised Policy GBLA, Unauthorized Release of Confidential Information, Item 6.11, Revised Policy GBO, Virginia Retirement System, VRS, Item 6.12, Retire Policy GCBCAA, Health Insurance, Item 6.13, Retire Policy GCFAA, Hiring Retired Employees, and Item 6.14, Retire Policy GCO, Professional Staff Promotions. Can I get a motion to approve the Consent Agenda as presented?
Chair, I move that we approve the Consent Agenda as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Young. Can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Cook. Ms. Aller?
Mr. Chair, just, so I'd just like to comment that I really appreciate on the resolutions, in particular getting the information on the activities that are done in the schools to support those resolutions and that they're not, that they, that we take them seriously and do things in response to. Thank you, Dr. Heron.
I apologize, Ms. Cook. Any other discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Aller?
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Ms. Ombi?
Aye.
Mr. Dowell?
Aye. Thank you. And that takes us to item 7.01, Approval of Financial Report and Monthly Bills and Payroll for March 2021. Can I have a motion for that item?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the financial report and monthly bills and payroll for March 2021.
Thank you, Ms. Ombi. In a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Young. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Kelly. Thank you.
I do have one. I noticed that our projected revenue is coming in significantly over our budgeted revenue, and I am interested to see what's, in a future meeting, not tonight, obviously, what our end-of-year spending plan looks like and how we're going to manage that issue. That's for a future meeting and not tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. We'll provide that.
Any other discussion? Okay. Hearing none. Ms. Aller?
Ms. Ombi?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Dowell?
Aye. Item 7.02, Approval of World Language Instructional Materials Adoption. If I can have a motion for that item.
I move that the school board approval list of recommended vendors and resources for world language instructional materials.
Thank you, Dr. Beers. A second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Young. Any discussion?
Do we need to, I don't have my computers restarted.
Would you like to list the vendors?
Yeah, I think we should.
Yeah, if we can list the vendors in that motion, please.
And the budget amount?
Yeah.
And the budget amount. Thank you.
A friendly amendment to that. So Vista Higher Learning, Carnegie, Havas, and Cambridge with a budget of $95,000.
Thank you, Ms. Ombi.
Dr. Beers has to approve that amendment as the original.
Dr. Beers, did you hear that amendment?
Yeah.
And do you agree with that amendment?
I was looking at the, I didn't see the figure in there.
We see the $95,000 in the recommended action. Thank you, Dr. Beers. And does the second stand? Ms. Young?
The second stands.
Thank you, Ms. Young. Any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Aller?
Dr. Beers?
Aye, yes.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Ms. Ombi?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Mr. Dowell?
Aye. Thank you. All right. Item 7.03, Approval of Special Education Annual Plan 2021 through 2022, and the title 6B Flow Through Funds. Can I get a motion for that item?
Mr. Chair, I approve the Special Education Annual Plan for 2021 and 2022 in the title 6B Flow Through Funds.
Thank you, Ms. Ombi. In a second? Thank you, Ms. Young. Any discussion on this item? All of these items were discussed in relative length at our last meeting, so they should be pretty fresh in our minds just being a week ago. Any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Aller?
Ms. Ombi?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Dowell?
Aye. Thank you. All right. Item 7.04, Approval of the Carl D. Perkins Grant. And I believe there's a grant amount. Is that right, or no?
163, approximately. It's not on here.
Not on here. Okay. The approval of the Carl D. Perkins Grant, if I can get a motion for that item?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the local plan and budget for career and technical education, Carl D. Perkins Grant for school year 2021 to 2022.
Thank you, Ms. Young. Is there a second?
Second.
I do have a.
I'm not sure who that, was that, thank you, Ms. Ombi. Yes, Ms. Hummel.
I'm sending this reminder to Dr. Heron, but to get the breakdown, if it's already been sent and I didn't see it, I'm.
This BQ has been done right now.
Right now, okay.
It's only from a week ago. It's still been worked on, but yes, it's in process.
Okay. I'm just gonna shoot an email. Okay. Thank you.
Questions from the board? I just want to say that I appreciate all the work that goes into ensuring that we are able to get this grant year to year. And we heard last week just the great benefit that it's had during COVID and post-COVID, as we're leaning towards putting COVID behind us. And so being able to stay CTE-relevant is crucial, and I appreciate all the hard work that's gone into that. So with that, if we can get a vote, Ms. Aller?
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Ms. Ombi?
Aye.
And Mr. Dowell?
Aye. Thank you. And we're going to move to 7.05, Approval of Temporary Purchasing Authority for Trailer-Related Purchases Over $1,000.
Hundred.
Another item that we discussed at length in our last meeting. Can I have a motion for that?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve temporary authority to the superintendent for trailer-related purchases over $100,000 through August 31, 2021.
Thank you, Ms. Ombi. In a second, please?
Second.
Any discussion? In our last meeting, I know that we asked, or kind of reaffirmed, an expectation that though we're putting this $100,000 number on this purchasing authority for, excuse me, yeah, Dr. Heron, we, of course, would like to get regular or routine updates on that spending and just to have an assurance that it's on par with what's needed for those trailers. Yeah. I think that was the crux of our last conversation. Okay. Any other discussion around this item? Mr. Kelly, you're good?
I'm absolutely fine. Yep.
Ms. Aller?
Ms. Ombi?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Mr. Dowell?
Aye. All right. That closes out our action items. Thank you, everyone. And so if we can get an update on our Return to Learn, item 8.01, Dr. Heron?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This evening, we're going to have a brief presentation on Return to Learn, data update, and also response to some of the questions that board members asked at our last evening. And I will hand over to Mr. Kiefer, Chief Operating Officer, to lead off the conversation.
Thank you, Mr. Kiefer. Thank you, Dr. Heron. Good evening, board members. This evening, we will give you a brief update and just recall for you, data that has changed on our dashboard. You may remember that last Tuesday, when we talked, we probably had in the neighborhood of about 50 students that were in quarantine. That number has hopped up a little bit over the course of the last week. We alluded to the fact that there were some additional cases coming forward, perhaps as a result of the spring vacation time period. And as a result of that, several students have needed to be placed in the contact, the close contact protocol, and therefore quarantined. You'll note the number of five teachers, and I think that's important to recall for the board, that the vaccination process has really assisted us with this. That number could potentially. us with this. That number could potentially be much higher based on close contact designations, but once somebody is fully vaccinated, the need to quarantine is diminished. So that's a real plus for us, and wanted to bring that to the board's attention. We are excited that elementary students started back four days a week yesterday, and I think Dr. Worley is gonna talk to us for a couple minutes about that and lead us into the announcement that we made earlier today.
Good evening, everyone. We are excited about the announcement we made today to welcome our secondary students back four days per week. And I believe the next picture that you see, we have some students that are engaged on hybrid days, I believe, at Hornsby Middle School. And those that's a picture of where you can see students participating in school, partially remotely and partially in in classroom, live person-to-person. So as I said, we're very excited to transition our current our current in-person learning students to four days of in-person or face-to-face learning on Monday, May 3. Students currently learning in person on the blue-green schedules, two days per week, will now engage in learning four days per week, again, starting on May 3, through the remainder of the school year. This will not impact students currently learning remotely or students that are currently enrolled in our full-time virtual academy. What does this mean for our families and students? Classrooms will be set up to accommodate a three-feet of social distancing as recommended by the CDC between desks. Our students and staff will continue to constantly adhere to our mitigation strategies. This includes the use of face-to-face coverings, social distancing, daily symptom checks, frequent hand washing, and daily cleaning and disinfecting of our schools. School leaders are making operational adjustments within buildings to facilitate this transition. This will look different across schools as our buildings vary vary in size and layout. You will notice adjustments to a few lunch schedules and locations, as we will maintain a six-foot distance between students during lunchtime, as students must remove their masks to eat lunch. Our teachers will continue with flexibility and differentiated instruction to accommodate larger classes like PE or Fine and Performing Arts. Additionally, some classroom locations may change as necessary to accommodate larger class sections. Our school leaders have diligently reviewed master schedules, section by section, to identify and make necessary adjustments for in-person learning. Families with a concern about four days of in-person learning should contact their child's school on or before April 26. And I'll give that date again. If you have a concern about four days of in-person learning, please contact your child's school on or before April 26. Our Fridays will remain remote. The spring is a very busy time for us, and the majority of the day of our Fridays will be utilized for SOL testing, APA testing, AP testing, and pulling in our students from the virtual academy for their AP testing. We look forward to seeing most of our students in the classroom four days per week.
Thanks, Dr. Worley. Prior to talking some about senior activities, wanted to address a question that came forward from the board last week around what some of those restrictions might be in terms of hosting events, et cetera. Many of you are familiar with Executive Order 72. It was first enacted by the governor in December of 2020 and has subsequently been amended no less than four times. The last amendment happened on March 23. Executive Order 72 details some of the temporary restrictions in place across the Commonwealth based on COVID-19. As an example, Executive Order 72 limits public and private gatherings to sizes of 50 people indoors and 100 people outdoors. Mask mandates remain in place. Physical distancing remains an expectation, and as we've learned throughout the last 14 months, we can anticipate additional revisions in the coming weeks and months. It's Executive Order 72 that really sets some limits that we must work within in terms of programming for students beyond the educational instructional setting. Dr. Worley?
Thank you, Mr. Kiefer. With that being said, celebrating the senior class is a treasured time each school year, and this year is no exception. Our school leadership teams and and teachers work with senior class officers and other senior leaders to plan appropriate senior senior activities every year. This year, the planning process is the same, however, the choices look a little different as we navigate parameters of COVID-19. Mr. Kiefer just provided an update on Executive Order 72, which limits our ability to hold traditional events like the senior prom. However, we know we we now have we know how important this time of year is for families and seniors, so each high school is continuing the tradition of planning opportunities to celebrate the senior class. All three high schools are planning activities for Senior Spirit Week, as well as a culminating celebration before graduation. Some examples of Senior Week activities include a drive-through breakfast, the Drive the Dog Street event, awards, opportunities, senior gift pickups, and more. Additionally, schools are finalizing the details for a culminating event for seniors to celebrate in lieu of traditional activities. As always, the celebrations vary a bit from school to school, as student voice is a huge part of the planning. If families have any questions about senior activities, you should contact your child's school. In addition to the culminating activities, we cannot wait to celebrate the accomplishments of the class of '21, 2021, and honor them during our graduation ceremonies in June. Thank you.
And finally, we received a question from Ms. Cook at our last meeting around the COVID testing pilot that we've seen a lot about in the news over the course of the last few weeks, and wanted to share with the board the work that administration and staff has done, really from the beginning when it was started to be talked about at the state level, both VDOE and VDH. Part of the concern that came forward was around the currently available WJCC staff that we have in place in order to support the testing pilot. There were concerns that came forward about some of the logistics and confidentiality and record-keeping that surrounded testing. While the state worked to define the process, we believe that there are still some additional layers of that that need to be fully explored. There is a voluntary aspect of the testing program, and at this juncture, members of our health advisory team pointed to the fact that there is limited research on the impact of testing on the spread of COVID-19 in schools. To date, two school divisions in the Commonwealth of Virginia that we're aware of have expressed an interest in the pilot. At this juncture, our recommendation is that we're not going to participate in the spring pilot opportunity, but keep an eye on what that looks like and how we could potentially become involved in that as we think about the fall 2021. Acting on advice from the health advisory team, we are also gonna focus our effort on enhancing our contact investigation support team. One of the areas that that group advised that we really look at is how to better support our nurses and our trained contact investigators within the school, and we're exploring ways to bring additional contact investigators onto our team. And finally, wanted to reiterate for our viewing public the importance of the mitigation strategies that are occurring. There are COVID cases that are being brought into the schoolhouse. We know that. We feel like the mitigation pieces that are in place are helping us keep the the transmission rates low within the school, but recognize that we're also having to designate close contacts as a result of those COVID cases coming in. Mitigation is absolutely essential, and face coverings, mask wearing is the most advantageous and safest way for us to continue to move forward. At this point, we'd be glad to answer any questions that the board members may have.
Any questions from the board? Ms. Zombi?
I have one question and one comment. Dr. Worley, I'm just curious, last quarter, there are approximately 1,000 students who secondary students who chose to stay remote learning. How many of those 1,000 came back for this fourth?
It was a small number. I don't have that with me, but we are gonna track it again if other students put in that request, so I can get that exact number for you.
It was a small number that chose to stay remote or a small number that chose to come back for the fourth?
It was a smaller number that came back, but we do have others that asked to go remote after we came back in person.
So we still have, what, around 3,700 students that are remote, if you include virtual and then?
Estimate, yes.
Okay, so that does give us some more flexibility with allowing other students to come back. And then just wanted to give props and accolades to all of our staff. I know I talked to one of our local principals, and he expressed the process staff in his building went through with regard to senior activities, and so I appreciate including our seniors, and our students are resilient. And I know a lot of parents, including myself, have have expectations for what they think senior activities, culminating events, will look like. But I think our staff have done a really good job of trying to honor the wishes of our students. And so while it's not typical or traditional, I think we are celebrating them. And I think at the end of the day, our students are happy with what they're able to do. Well, not perfect. I just appreciate working with our students and and getting that feedback from them. So thank you.
Ms. Young?
Referring back to the comment that was made by the parent that called in, is it possible, and if you if you want me to submit this as an SBQ, but I think it would be a good thing that if parents could if principals could communicate to this the parents at their schools what things are happening on Friday in their school, so that there would be less concern about it. I'd like to see the kids back in school on Fridays. However, if if there's other things going on, there there shouldn't be every student in the building then. I think it would be a good idea to let parents know.
We will certainly follow up on that, Ms. Young. I believe, you know, as you probably were, principals have been very involved in all of the decisions about going back to school, and they were certainly involved in the decision regarding Fridays. And as Ms. as Dr. Worley's already mentioned, it's mostly driven by testing, and Mr. Kiefer may want to speak to elementary as well. It's driven by the need to test students at the elementary as well.
Right, bringing in students who are remote to be able to test in school, and doing that on top of the students that are already in school, logistically becomes nearly impossible. So Fridays really give us that opportunity to bring the necessary students in to ensure that we're getting the testing done that needs to occur.
And we do have to, obviously, the social distancing makes a large, huge impact on our ability to test as well.
And I understand that. Thank you. But I I think it helps the the our constituency if they know what's going on. And so is they're testing happening in every elementary school building.
Yes, ma'am. And in fact, I was on a Virginia Department of Education call this morning where they were reemphasizing the importance of students taking the SOLs, because if students don't take it in a school division, it could actually impact our accreditation rating a year from now, when we're looking at student growth from year to year. So even though accreditation is we have for this year, it won't be next year, and one of those models that help us in accreditation is the growth from year to year. So we want to bring every virtual student in to take their SOL, and we want all of our students to take their SOLs this year to give us some baseline data.
Is it only virtual students that we're bringing in on Fridays?
Virtual students will be doing the testing on Fridays, but also other students, I believe, are being remediated as well.
Yes.
That's what I want to know. Thank you.
Mrs. Cook?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, just building on what Mrs. Young said, I've seen some communications recently about, you know, SOL testing on Fridays and remediation opportunities and so. And so I think that that communication has been helpful, not only just to know that that's going on, even if your child's not involved, but then also if your child is involved, it gives you a heads up on what dates to look at. So I thought that communication was very, very helpful. And and I think Mrs. Young is right that, you know, it would probably give parents sort of information and peace of mind. If I could follow up on the the testing. So, Mr. Kiefer, so I understand. I appreciate your looking into that, and it makes sense that only a couple of divisions have jumped in. Everybody's got their hands full. And and it seems that with proper mitigation, that virus is not spreading within schools. So but that can you talk a little bit more about what you're envisioning in terms of helping the nurses with tracing? Can you add a little bit more?
Sure. We one of the challenges that we've found is that if if there is a case that comes forward, the number of students that need to be talked with, staff members that need to be interviewed, the investigative pieces, and we're not allowed to call it contact tracing, we're calling it contact investigation.
Okay.
So we don't step on the toes of the Virginia Department of Health, but it just takes man-hours. And the idea that in addition to serving the students four days a week at elementary, middle, and now high coming up, our nurses are particularly busy. We've trained an additional staff member in each building on what those contact investigation initial steps are, but we want to be able to provide additional assistance and ensure that we have staff coverage across all of our buildings as necessary. So what we're looking at right now is the potentiality to bring someone on part-time through some some funding that is available to assist with that as we close out the year, potentially also utilizing some other part-time staff to support that endeavor, and then look at what that could be for '21, '22.
And I'm not sure you can answer this question, so if you if you can't, please just, you know, take a pass. But when you're doing that tracing, I'm sorry, tracing investigation, is that right?
Right, investigation.
Investigation. Do you come into do you find out about situations in which maybe people are not making wise choices or doing things where it is reasonable to assume if someone is infected that this virus could spread easily? Is that are you?
I think one of the things that we're finding without without divulging too much information is that sometimes those systems, the the symptoms are presenting themselves before a student perhaps arrives at school. And you're you might remember last week, I mentioned how important that symptom checker really is, and the idea that if there is any type of concern about within the home or the student that someone might be exhibiting those symptoms, that they not come to school. Because I think one of the things that we find is that more often than not, those symptoms are present before arriving at school. We find out the positive test, and then we've put some other people at risk, and subsequently they need to quarantine. If, in fact, we had made the decision as a family to withhold that student from the school setting, there'd be other students that weren't quarantining. That did that I think that.
That was a yes, that was very helpful. And and so whereas we see from your presentation earlier that the vast majority of our staff are vaccinated, but the vast majority of our students are not, correct?
To the best of our knowledge, that is correct, as we've just opened up the ability for 16 and older to be able to have the vaccine.
Right, so there might be a handful of 18-year-olds who are vaccinated, but generally, yeah. So no, I appreciate that. Because could you talk it was not in the beginning of your presentation today, but could you talk a little bit about what level of transmission we're in as a community right now? Do you know?
I can. Remember, last week, I shared that we we get the report two weeks in arrears.
Right.
We'll get that report tomorrow. I did look on the CDC's COVID data tracker today, and both Williamsburg and James City County are in the high transmission rate. One is in the high rate, I believe it's James City County, based on number of cases per 100,000. Positivity rate has gone down, whereas Williamsburg, the the case number per 100,000 is down, but the positivity rate is higher. So both are considered to be in the high category.
Thank you. So I guess my point in asking these questions is to say that transmission is high. The virus is still out there and spreading, and so people really need to to be cautious so that we can continue to deliver educational services in in person, and then more importantly, well, no, and it's so that we can continue to deliver those services in person. And so thank you very much for that.
Yes, ma'am.
I just want to be really pointed in saying that, you know, please be wise and make make wise choices so that so that the planning that has gone on doesn't get upended. And then the last thing I wanted to ask, I think this is for you, Dr. Worley, is can you talk a little bit more? You mentioned the student involvement in, you know, high school culminating events, but can you talk a little bit more how those are customized to the school? So for maybe people who are wondering why one school isn't doing, you know, a prom-like event but doing something else, can you talk a little bit about how that came may have come to be?
Sure. Typically, at every school, the senior class officers are a big part of collaborating with the senior class sponsor, junior class sponsor, administrative team on activities that they would like to see every year, and it's ongoing. It's not just at the end of the year. This happens for homecoming, for SCA events, all throughout the year. So this year in particular, they're they're in dialogue probably a little more than a regular year because it's looking it looks different. So they're researching what we can do, what what do we want to do, what is safe to do. And so there's a lot of dialogue going on all year. Our students have been planning virtual events all year and leading up to this, they're they're absolutely a huge part of the conversation about how they want their senior activities to look. And that's been this way every year, and it does look a little different across schools each year, that the activities leading up to, say, the prom or graduation, because we do listen to student voice in that planning.
They have had some agency in in what the results are.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you very much. That's helpful. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Ms. Hummel?
Um, this is I don't know whether this is for Ms. Fouja or for you, Ms. Worley. It's specifically.
It's specifically addressing some of the caller's questions about graduation and the actual three graduation events and the number of tickets and the location, et cetera, et cetera. And my guess, my question would be, I can totally appreciate the hard work that goes into the planning and the complexities of a normal graduation year. I can't begin to imagine what's going on right now with COVID and all of the restrictions that are in place. So I wondered, and I know some people just wanted to know, like, how we arrived to where we are today. And so maybe if you could just take a moment to just share with us how we arrived to our current situation with the two tickets at Warner Stadium.
Thank you for asking. It has been an ongoing process. I mean, it actually started last year, right after graduation at that point in time and well into this year. Most venues wouldn't even discuss availability because they weren't sure what they were going to be able to support. As Mr. Keever talked about, Executive Order 72, that has driven a lot of that. There are specific guidelines for graduations that have been provided by the governor. That did allow us to talk to a few venues. There were many venues that still were not, just not offering opportunities this year. Of the venues that were available, the most tickets we could get were three. And so that is what we're doing, our three tickets. We also noted that the executive order has changed four times. If that changes, we will certainly revisit that. But it will be, you know, very specific seating with those three tickets together as a unit in order to be able to provide that opportunity as many people as we are able to.
Thank you. And then just to reiterate, I know people are comparing, like, why not Zabel? And William &amp; Mary isn't allowing any outside people. Is that correct?
There was some discussion with William &amp; Mary, but we went with where we could get the most tickets, which was, Warner Stadium was three.
I'm sorry, what?
William &amp; Mary offered the opportunity to have two guests to graduation. One, or we were able to do three to involve more family. That drove the final decision.
Great. Thank you for all the work that you're doing. I know it's just a Herculean effort, so. And I just hope that everyone listening and the public and all the parents of the graduating seniors know that you, more than anyone would like to see, the best graduation ever. And you're working as hard as you can within the restrictions that you have to deal with, so.
We're very committed to making it a special day for our seniors.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions from the board? Mr. Kelly?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. I do appreciate the presentation from Dr. Keever and Dr. Worley. And I'm very excited about our students returning to the classroom for four days a week at all the levels and all the work from our staff and our teachers to implement this paradigm and make this happen. I also appreciate Dr. Keever's conversation about the executive order and the restrictions that has. And, you know, as a public entity, as in public money, we have to abide by the governor's executive order. Folks out there may agree or disagree that those restrictions are too overly restrictive or not restrictive enough. But, and, you know, individual board members and even members of the administration might have your own personal opinion. But we are, we are, we have to, we have to bound, we're bound by those restrictions. And we have to make sure that we're doing everything we can to abide by those restrictions. And so, you know, in hopes that as we continue to do the right things, as Mrs. Cook was saying and Dr. Keever was saying, maybe those will relax in a little bit. But, you know, and then back to what Mrs. Hummel was saying, our ability to plan and react to those is going to be impacted as it goes forward. So it's a tough, it's a tough paradigm we find ourselves in. And I appreciate all the work that's being done to plan and do everything we can for our seniors and our students.
Kelly?
One question from me. I know that we do have a process in place once a student brings COVID into the classroom unknowingly, unwittingly. And there's a quarantine process that goes into place for the classroom. Can you explain that, share what that looks like?
Certainly. Part of the assessment that our tracers do is ask those questions. And the guiding line, the guideline for the quarantine decision-making is being within six feet for 15 minutes or more and being able to clearly identify which students may be impacted. Sometimes if you're working with a younger class and there's a lot of movement in the class, there may be more students involved in a quarantine because they are interacting more frequently than in an older class where we can clearly say that students were in specific seats for the entire class. So it's really a case-by-case situation, depending on what those assessors determine.
And how long is the quarantine for that class? Is it 14 days? Is that accurate?
Yes.
14 days, okay. With, I imagine that there's been conversation, or maybe I should ask, has there been conversation about incorporating, I guess, a family's decision to have their own student tested on their own dime, on their own time, to confirm that that student who's been quarantined does not carry the virus? Has that been a piece of the conversation to get them back to the classroom earlier than 14 days? I believe the CDC guidance is exposure after five days, get that test. Has that been discussed?
It has been discussed, but the consistency has been with the 14 days.
So there's no more discussion on that?
Not at this time.
As we're looking at vaccinations and?
I'm sure, especially as students are able to get vaccinated, we'll be revisiting that as we are able to have more and more students vaccinated.
I think it would be good that we do revisit it. We got a lot of students that want to be in the classroom. You know, 14 days is a hardship for a student that's not sick and needs to be in the classroom, by the way. And I imagine that that procedure regulation is going to transmit itself into the 2021, 22 school year. And so I'd like to see that we do revisit that so that we can shorten that amount of time that a student is outside of the classroom needlessly.
Ooh, sorry.
I don't know if Dr. Heron, you wanted to say something to that?
We'll certainly look at the guidelines currently. That's what we have been implementing. And obviously, teachers no longer quarantine because they're vaccinated. And as more students become eligible for vaccination, we certainly would encourage them to do so because I think that is a game changer at the secondary level especially. We're bound by CDC guidelines right now. So we're moving on CDC guidelines that we were three feet apart in the classroom, but the contact tracing is six feet apart. So hopefully, at some point in time, there'll be consideration by CDC about that as well. But we're certainly, we're open to always looking to make things better, but that's our current, that's the way we've operated for a long period of time now.
Thank you, Dr. Heron. Yes, Ms. Cook?
I'd just like to follow up on what you said, Mr. Chair. I think, while I appreciate the sentiment there, I think that there are a lot of individualized and dynamic situations out there. So as students start to get vaccinated, as quarantining protocols change as a result of that, it seems to me that introducing a dynamic where testing for, is it a PCR test? Is it a rapid test? Those sorts of things seems to overly complicate, particularly with, you know, eight, seven, how many weeks are left? Eight, seven?
Eight.
So I don't know. So I'm not sure I concur with that. I just wanted to.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm less concerned about the number, the seven weeks that we have left, but considering, reconsidering that for the next year. But I hear you.
The vaccinations, that whole system is going to probably be different in the fall. So probably that's going to have to be completely rethought anyway, I assume.
Any other comments or questions for return to learn? Thank you for the report. I appreciate it. Ms. Boujouat, Mr. Keever?
Thank you.
All right. So we are going to move on to board member comments. I'd like to let Mr. Kelly have the last word at this point. So I'm going to ask Ms. Hummel if you'll start us off.
Hi, my only board comment tonight is just to congratulate old Lafayette High School Rams going into the, beating Phoebus. I think they have not played Phoebus for how many, how many years? Like, none of the, none of the players were born before they played Phoebus. So it's just been one of those, like, Holy Grail of football, way back, way back. So the fact that they beat Phoebus is huge. And then I just wish them all the best and all of our athletes. It's just the spirit and the excitement that these athletes feel when they are on the field, when their parents can watch them on the field. All of these bring us a little sense of return to normalcy, and it's just so precious. So I just wanted to say to all of our athletes that are out there and all the people watching them and cheering them on that we appreciate everything that you're doing and your best for life. I also just want to, once again, thank all of our teachers and our administrators and staff. We are in the homestretch now, and it has been a very, very, very long year. And we really appreciate you and everything that you're doing this year. So I just want everyone to know that we appreciate you. Thank you.
Ms. Hummel, Ms. Cook?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chair. I just would like to follow up on what Ms. Hummel said and just say that, yes, watching in person is nice, but also I love the new High School Network. And so I was able to watch, I've been able to watch on demand. And I've been able, the other night, I was watching War Hill Field Hockey be successful in the postseason. And I've watched some other teams. So in fact, War Hill Field Hockey is, I think their game started at seven. So anxiously waiting to see how they do tonight. So I hope that that's something that continues past the pandemic because even though the film quality is a little bad, like, it's still great to hear the announcers and be able to partake. So, you know, keep up the good work. I also just want to say, I'm so proud of our arts programming. The Music Award was wonderful, but it's just, we have such a great arts program here in WJCC. And we're just very lucky. And also wanted to thank Busch Gardens in Clonan, Williamsburg, and the Restaurant Association for their support of our students. It's really, it's really wonderful when a community comes together. And I do appreciate our return to normalcy, and I do hope that it can continue. So I just encourage you all to please make smart decisions, be safe, because we don't want to mess it up. So please, when you're out there in your personal lives, please don't do anything that messes it up for other kids because everybody else is just trying to get back to normal. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cook. Ms. Ombi?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I concur with my colleagues' comments and too, just wanted to echo. Congratulations to our music department. Personally, all four of my children have participated their entire academic career, either in choral or band. And so we do have phenomenal teachers. And I fielded some emails and questions, you know, earlier on this year, like, you know, how is band possible virtual? And it's, our teachers have done an incredible job. And so having those related arts were, have been the highlight always for my students, my own children. But certainly this year, too. And so our art teachers and our band teachers and our choral teachers were able to do some really cool things and engage our kids virtually. And now they're back in the class, and I know they're so excited because kids are together and can make music and can sing together while socially distanced. But it's just an exciting time of the year. So congratulations and accolades.
Thank you, Ms. Ombi. Ms. Young?
Yes, I did look at the figure for the Carl Perkins Grant. It's $163,793.14, which is a nice chunk of change. But I, thinking about it, I just want to thank the people that work in grants, the one for SPED, the one for our CTE program. Those grants are very important in being able to provide as much and as many services to our students who are in those programs. And so I appreciate that. I do want to, again, just say ditto to what was said about the fine arts in Lafayette High School. And I'm very glad that our high school students are going back to school four days a week, starting in May. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Young. Dr. Beers?
Yeah, a couple of things. First of all, I'd like to recognize all of our, all the teachers and directors, mentors, and celebrate the fact that WJCC has received, the notification that it's one of the best communities for music education. I would go a step further and say, I think it's one of the best for all of the arts that we have here. I think the performing arts here are second to none. I think the visual arts, from the work that I've seen students do around the school, it's really phenomenal. And we're really blessed having, not just the talent of students, but teachers and mentors and folks in the division that support and promote that. I also recognize how important it is for us to have a strong collection of volunteers helping in all of our schools. And I would also like to particularly point out that we have a PTA council. We have PTAs in every one of our schools. They're all volunteers. And they have, and they have really done a great deal of work and spent time trying to help their schools as we go through this very difficult period. I met with, I have met with a number of them, and they very much appreciate what our division is doing and are very supportive. Our businesses, we couldn't survive. We could survive, but we could not thrive without the support of so many businesses in our community. And so for them to receive that honor roll, to be members of that honor roll, I think it's really important. Purple up for our kids in the military. On a day ahead, sorry, I had my purple tie on. But I know it's tomorrow, but nobody would see me tomorrow, so I thought I'd wear it tonight. And last but not least, our athletes. And any number of teams and their recognition and how far they go. And some of them are still going. So I just, it's a really, if you really think about it, it's a very complete school system. We have excellent academics, excellent athletes. All the arts are clearly covered. And I certainly don't want to leave out the librarians, who are very supportive of our students as well. And finally, I am happy, I know many of us are, look forward as we move towards full student, students returning to our WJCC schools. But as has been pointed out tonight, we still have to be vigilant. The virus is still out there in any number of different forms. So we have to be vigilant. We have to be patient and understanding. And you know how I like to leave with the last one? We have to be respectful of the people that are working so hard to make a return to school safe and helpful as well. I know it's a little long, but strongly, but thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Beers. I first wanted to start out by just acknowledging, we did have a teacher health emergency today at one of our elementary schools. And I just think that, would like to convey just that our thoughts would go out to that individual that's in recovery mode. But my prayers as well. I know it's a scary time for family, for students and other teachers that see that happening live. And so we just wanted to extend our thoughts and prayers to that individual at that school. I'm really excited about four days, going back four days next week, or excuse me, in May, early May. And I know my kids are as well. I want to thank the staff. I know. I know you get a lot of gruff, a lot of even hostility from the community. And this really shows that you guys are still moving that chain, keeping the ball moving, looking forward and trying to, trying our best to get our students back in person. And I appreciate that. I also wanted to say thank you to our V SBA honor roll recipients. I never like to single anybody out, but I'm really, really looking forward to that march down Duca Gloucester Street again. Last year was the first opportunity that we had to do that. And it was on the heels of, or in the throes of a pandemic. And you could not tell that the mood was soured that day. Everybody was just, you know, on high emotion and just excited that they had achieved their, their high school academic career. And so looking forward to that again, I know it's going to be a great day. So thank you guys for making that happen. And thank you to Colonial Williamsburg for partnering with us again. With that, I wanted to let Mr. Kelly have the last word.
Thank you, Mr. Dowell, I appreciate it. I agree and echo all the comments from the board members tonight. I really appreciate all the discussion there. Dr. Hearn, I hope as we're acknowledging Colonial Williamsburg, we'll also acknowledge your support of the vaccination of our teachers and of our community as part of that V SBA honor roll thing. Because I, I think that's, that was an outstanding contribution that they had for us. Mrs. Aller and I are putting together the agenda for our board retreat and looking towards getting a facilitator. So if you have not provided agenda, proposed agenda items and things that she thought we should talk about and would like to, please forward those to Mrs. Aller and I as soon as possible so that we can continue our planning for that. Along with that, I really appreciated Mrs. Aller and her looking at what we do with, from a fresh perspective. I know there was, has been some discussion amongst the board members about the minutes and the level of detail. And I appreciate everything she's done there and incorporating those board docs tools. And we're continuing to work through those things. But I do, I do like the fresh perspective and looking at, asking us why we do things the way we do. And I think she's been, she's been great that way and I appreciate her work there. Mrs. Cook, I agree with you on the, on some of the things that we've, that we've learned in this pandemic. And we need to take, take some of those good things away from this and include them in our programming going forward. I think what she talked about with the high school TV and even some of our virtual learning, I think that's all good things that will continue going forward. And lastly, I'd like to thank Mr. Dowell for filling in his chair tonight and doing an admirable, outstanding job. I had a business trip, which was extended by a day. I thought I could fit it in and get back yesterday, or get back this morning, is what I was, I was planning. But I had to extend it by a day and so I'll be traveling back tomorrow. But caused me unexpectedly to miss tonight's meeting, but I appreciate Mr. Dowell filling in and doing a great job. And thanks to the technology staff, this has really been a seamless, seamless effort. And I appreciate all that good work, so. With that, I turn it back over to you, Mr. Dowell.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. We'll go to 10.01, upcoming events. On May 12th, 2021, at 8:00 AM, virtually, is going to be a school liaison committee meeting. On May 13th, 6:30 PM, virtually, a special education advisory committee meeting. May 19th, 2021, at 3:30 PM, virtually, a 21st Century and Career Ready Advisory Committee meeting. And then on May 20th, 8:30 AM, virtually, a policy committee meeting. And if I've missed anything, please let me know. Good, okay, and we'll go on to upcoming meetings. On May 4th, we have a closed session at 6:00 PM here in the NX. And on May 4th, 6:30 PM, the work session, right here. Closed session on May 18th. I have to apologize to my wife, that's our anniversary. At the Striker Center. And then at 6:30, the regular meeting on the same evening, Striker Center. All right.
Mr. Dowell, I'd also like to just point out that we are going to have live public comment at those meetings, changing from our pre-recorded paradigm and return back to the three-minute length, judging by the number of comments that we've had.
Excellent.
That was what, that's what I think we're going to propose.
Great, thank you, Mr. Kelly. All right, with that, we will adjourn this meeting, thank you.